I call this meeting of Salons Springs Board of Adjustment to order. Roll call, please.
Thong.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here.
Sally.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Bernard.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Thank you, I appreciate that. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting on from January the 11th, 2022. Commissioners, you've all received copies of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Our first item on the agenda tonight is a variance request. For a drive-through variance BOA 21-02, Mr. Rhodes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ben Rhodes, Senior Planner. So what you're looking at is a variance request. This is occurring at 26 or 2960 Highway 412 East. And the variance is to request for a speaker system at a drive-through service that will be within 79.7 feet from the exterior wall of a neighboring residential home. The variance is needed because the current rule is that there's a 200-foot buffer between these audio devices and neighboring residences within or the drive-through code. So here is the exhibit, a site plan that's been provided by the applicant that shows the closest, so there's two lanes coming in, and the closest there being about 75.5 feet. But that's out to an open space, but when you angle that, we got about that 77 feet roughly to the closest outer wall corner of that structure. So looking at the statement of hardship provided by the applicant, you can read that, but as I'm presenting essentially in summary, the issues are that there is just, the lot's not deep enough to allow for the 200-foot spacing because of the nature of how, if you wanted to put the driveway, drive-through on another side of the lot or building, it wouldn't function correctly per code and also per the building that they're proposing. The statement of hardship does continue here with what they're proposing. I want to really focus more on the second part of that statement that came in later, that they are proposing as a mitigation, 19 trees. These are the Altus Magnolia trees that will be told or have kind of a sound buffering effect to them, and they're positioned pretty close together to assist in that area. And then also, there will be an eight-foot tall opaque screen along the southern property line that will also help mitigate the sound. And so here, we see the site view, this is looking to the north. And essentially where the wall will go would be along the edge of this property line. And then you have the Magnolia trees that will be basically positioned along that drive-through, the southern side of the drive-through. I would like to remind the Board of Adjustment that there was a similar variance issued for Seven Brew that was right next door to this, if you recall. And the reason for that was because the lot with, is just not, the lot depth was just not sufficient to really account for all the aspects that have to happen on the property. And that's something they can't control, it's just established as is. So upon reviewing all the criteria and reading through this, staff does find that there are grounds for a hardship due to the limitations of location of the drive-through, can you place the lot, and still meet the other requirements of the drive-through code. The south side of the building is the only location and where the drive-through would really work on the property. Finally, limiting the time of the use, as you've read from the staff report, it's a temporal variance as well, it deals with the time of day, limiting that use to no later than after 7:00 AM would not work with the restaurant model in mind because of the breakfast service that they're proposing. So with that, we are available for any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Is anyone from the audience who wanted to address this? Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Rhodes on this?
You recall the height of the fence on Seven Brew? Did we do an eight-foot fence or a 10-foot fence?
It wouldn't have been 10-foot, that doesn't meet codes. I believe it was, it was a fence, they're proposing a wall, so that's a little bit different.
Okay.
And I believe it, I had to go back and check, but I believe that was about comparable height, seven, eight feet, yep.
Ben, let me follow up on that. Are they proposing a fence or a wall? And is it, what is the structure of the wall that you're talking there? Is it a sound edging wall, or is it a wooden fence? Do you know?
What's shown in their paperwork is this would be a wall. So it would be, which would also assist with the vehicle headlight trespass, you know, if it would come through someone's window at 2:00 in the morning and seeing, you know, lights coming through the window, this wall will prevent that from happening, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Having, hearing, seeing no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve SU 21-18, subject to staff approval conditions.
I have a motion to approve Board of Adjustments 21-02. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
A second by Thong. Roll call, please.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Thong.
Yes.
Motion is approved. That concludes the items on the Board of Adjustment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. I now call to order the Salons Springs Planning Commission. Roll call, please.
Thong.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here.
Sally.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Bernard.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
You've all received minutes from our meeting from January the 11th, 2022. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any changes to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those minutes are approved. Our first item on the agenda tonight is a special unit permit, SU 21-18, and significant development permit, SD 21-3. Mr. Rhodes will address both of those items jointly.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission. Yes, you're correct, I'm going to be presenting on both items. So what we're looking at is a significant development permit as well as a special use permit. And for simplicity, this is the same property that you just looked at for the variance. So we're at the same location, but now you're looking rather at the variance aspect, you're looking at the large-scale development. And then also, within our code, anytime there's a drive-through service that abuts up against a residential zone or use, that requires a special use permit. So that's why you're looking at both of those permits together. So for the significant development, that's a 3751 square foot quick-service restaurant, of course with the drive-through, as you know, and then the special use permit. So this is just the site plan that they provided. It should look somewhat familiar for you because of the previous item that we just looked at, but this is the full project. So what's special about this is they are actually not proposing any new driveways. So this is a shared-use driveway that's coming in off of Highway 412. That's the driveway that's going to Seven Brew. When we plotted and adjusted the lot lines out there, we wanted to make sure that that driveway straddles the lot line, so that there's access to both properties, so there wouldn't have to be an additional driveway. And then, I'm sure many of you are familiar, if you've been to Seven Brew, that there's the access out along Highway 16 on an existing driveway. I believe that was in the earlier picture. That will be utilized as well for primarily, I believe, egress from the drive-through service. The drive-through service here, as I mentioned earlier, does have a dual-lane service. It has two kiosks that come in off of that, that they're going to be entering in off of the parking lot, coming off, and then heading basically to the east for food, and then they get out along, hopefully on Highway 16. The distances here are just basically to the property lines and such like that for green space and things of that nature. So here, you have this, how this will look on the overall site. And this will show you really how this interacts with Seven Brew, because I know that's a big question, is how this all interact together. So you have Seven Brew shown on the left here, and then the driveway coming in. Vehicles would then either go straight and turn right to get into Seven Brew, or they would make the quick left to get into the restaurant, and then immediately will be able to make the right into the drive-through, or if they wanted to dine in and the restaurant proper, they would just park in one of these spaces here. There's plenty of parking for the facility. There's also a crosswalk here that will go out to the sidewalk if anyone is pedestrians going to the facility, and also a side path that has a continuation of an existing side path that's along Highway 16. So that's kind of the primary elements there. The dumpster will be up right next to the drive-through. Right after you pass those lanes will be the dumpster location. This is essentially what it will look like. This top view is the north-facing front, and then the bottom is the rear, which will be the south-facing. And then here is the landscape plan. And so, as you recall, I mentioned the Magnolia trees, it's a sound buffer. You can see that those are all shown along the south side here, as well as other additional trees that are planted throughout the property, to improve the aesthetics of the area. Drainage, if you were wondering, is handled off-site because of a regional drainage basin in the area. So here is the site view looking north. This is the same picture from the previous variance. So staff is recommending approval of both permits. So for the special use, there's one condition, and that has already been granted, and that is the approval of the related variance. And then for the significant development permit, we are recommending approval with three conditions, and I'll cover those real quick for you. The first has been met, that's also on the variance. The second one is on a utility easement. And this is going to be filed through separate instrument, which means it won't be on its own survey, but it'll be on a separate document done later. And this will be taken care of prior to the certificate of occupancy of the building because the exact location that easement is not fully known because it's involving utility lines that need to be constructed as part of the project. So we want to do that while it's under the construction phase. The last condition is related to a utility pole. If you look really closely in the photo on the right side, you'll see there's a utility pole right there, and then a sidewalk that just kind of deadens right into the pole there. So what were, what they had originally planned is that the sidewalk would just kind of go around and do that number, but we're thinking it'd be better just to have the sidewalk go straight and just have the pole moved instead. So we've made a condition that that would be shown on the construction plan set to have that pole relocated. And with that, we are recommending approval, and we're available for any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this issue? Commissioners, your turn.
Bennett, or just probably Justin question, but it seems like that property's always had drainage issues. I see reference to the existing stormpipe to the east there. I mean, do we really feel that that is going to serve as adequate for this runoff? I know the numbers probably say it does, but could you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, Justin Bland, City Engineer. So first of all, the site, we're kind of considering grandfathering in based upon what was there before, that the western half of this was just a complete concrete parking lot up until here recently, and then the rest of it was a building or parking. So there's actually a net decrease in the amount of impervious areas, so the amount of runoff is going to slightly go down, actually, surprisingly, on this site. RDOT, there's a storm box up here in this corner. RDOT has done some work, of course, Highway 16 is a state right-of-way, so there's, we have to coordinate with the DOT on that. So they have done some work in that area. The pipe crosses over, and then where the real issue is here, and unfortunately, there's not a whole lot we can do on this site to address this, but it's, there's a pipe under 412 that goes north, and it discharges there just south of the Waffle House. And what we found is that it's actually tilted the wrong way. And no idea, I guess it's been there since the road was built. I don't have no idea about the history beyond it, but that is something that we've discussed with RDOT, and that's the true bottleneck right there. So there's not a lot we can do on site to fix that. You know, once, you know, the water has its time, it drains down. It's just that the bottleneck's during that peak event right there. So I described elsewhere in the staff report, we're looking, we're talking to RDOT about the addition of a turn lane here, which would kind of alleviate some of the traffic issues, the back queuing. So we're hopeful that we can do both those projects at the same time if they move ahead, and, you know, hit two birds with the same stone. But long story short, it's really that north-south pipe under 412 that's the culprit, and there's just not a whole lot we can do as part of this project, so.
We talk a lot about RDOT in here and what we can't do.
I wish I had a better answer sometimes, I know.
John, concerning the turn lane, will the width of the street encroach on the planned development?
I don't think so. You're talking about the width there, as far?
Yeah, if they do proceed with the turn lane on Highway 16, will that encroach, or is there enough width there with the existing structure?
I believe there's an 80-foot right-of-way there. So, and I think if you look at the alignment, it's actually going to end up shifting to the east. So I think it's actually going to go the other way, most likely. So I think it'll be okay as far as.
Toward our best.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing no other questions from the commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I move to approve Significant Development 21-13 and Special Use Permit 21-18, with conditions as stated.
We have a motion to approve Significant Development 21-13 and Special Use 21-18. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, those will need to be voted on separately.
Okay, thank you.
They require separate motions.
Thank you, Jay. Well, I'm going to amend, can we amend the initial motion to approve only the first one? I think we can do that under Roberts. Okay, would you be so kind to amend your original motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Significant Development 21-13.
I think you're going to have to do special use first.
Special use.
You'll have to do that one first.
All right. I move to approve Special Use 21-18.
All right, we have a motion to approve Special Use 21-18. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Special Use Development Permit, SU 21-18. Roll call, please.
Sally.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Thong.
Yes.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved. That will go to the Board of Directors on March the 1st. Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve Significant Development Permit 21-13.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Significant Development 21-13, with conditions as stated.
I have a motion to approve Significant Development Permit, SD 21-13, with the conditions as recommended by staff. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
McKinney.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Thong.
Yes.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
That motion is approved, and that will go before the Board of Directors on March the 1st, 2022. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is preliminary plat development, PP 22-01. Mr. Rhodes.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commission. So before you is a preliminary plat for Foxtail Village, which creates 56 new single-family residential lots on 31.4 acres. The average lot size being 65, 20 square feet. And this is part of a past PD zone change for the area, planned unit development. What we're looking at is a 600 to 900 block of Highway 16. So a little bit, maybe about a quarter mile or so south of the last project that we just looked at. So here is the proposed site plan. Some notable features here is, or the most notable in my opinion, is actually the cul-de-sac here, because originally, this was planned to be a through-street to 16, but after staff reviewed it, we had, you know, a street here, a street here, a street here. We just thought there was a little too much coming in off of 16, with that being a major highway with traffic ever increasing as development continues to increase in this area. So we had suggested to them to perhaps delete one of those connections, and so they did. And now that is a cul-de-sac. Another notable factor is this does tie into an existing street stubout to the East Gate subdivision, which has been many, many years for that to be realized because the East Gate got developed some time ago, probably maybe more than 30 years ago at this point, or even more so. But originally, when that was developed, there was always the intention for those streets to continue to the east as new development happens. And now that will, that actually will happen, which anyone that lives in that subdivision will now have another way out to get to 16 without having to go south and then turn on Kenwood, and then turn back on the 16 to go north. This does match the PUD concept that was presented with the rezoning, with the exception of that cul-de-sac, which I just mentioned. And detention is located to the north of this proposal. Here, we do see the site view, this is looking to the north. We looked at it, and we do not need any special conditions on this one. So with that, we are available for any of your questions, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this preliminary plat development? Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners, Taylor Lindley with Crafton Toll &amp; Associates. I'm the engineer on the project, so just wanted to let you know that I am here and available for any questions if you have them, thanks.
Okay, we'll need your address also, I think.
Oh, okay, 5412 West Red Bud Street, Rogers, Arkansas.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address this? If not, Commissioners, it's your turn.
Ben, I noticed that there's three lots impacted in East Gate you mentioned.
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit about that? I wasn't sure the impact.
Yes, so if you go back to here, the three lots in question were this lot, this lot, and this lot. And by impact, it just means that they're the ones that would have a direct abutment, if you will, to the subdivision, similar to the Hillcrest. If you remember with Hillcrest and Stonecrest, and we had the two lots, two subdivisions that were touching, you know, at that. So that's happening here. These lots are a little bit more narrow, but what I noted that's different here than with Hillcrest is if you look closely, and it's really hard to see, I know, because of the image, but there's a really thick stand of trees there. So really thick vegetation through there. So my belief is that there really won't be a whole lot of visual impact because of all that vegetation that's through there. That kind of makes a little bit of a natural buffer right there at those lots, so.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a question for John Bland.
I'm assuming you mean Justin?
I knew you'd ask. Justin, on the traffic impact, the statement shows that we're rated for 22,000 vehicles per day. And right now, we're looking at 4,200 vehicles per day. Is there any consideration for all the future development that's in process now? This number, looking at traffic delays, you know, at Highway 16 and 412 intersection.
So the numbers I quoted are as of today, and it's kind of a moving target. You know, for instance, the, I think there are three projects that have been approved in the last year that, as of now, have yet to move forward. So it's difficult to know which projects are going to move forward and which aren't. So that's why I hesitate to do too much forecasting from that point of view and just give it as it is. I could, if you'd like to see that, I could try to do that in the future, but, you know, for instance, the subdivision across the street, as of today, that one hasn't moved ahead. So that, you know, it's just kind of hard to know, it's a little bit of a moving target from that point of view.
Right. So you're using the number right now with current traffic counts, not with future?
That's correct, uh-huh.
We're still looking at, I think, another 1,500 to 2,000 cars more with the other three, roughly?
Well, possibly. So the other, so we had the one across the street here, and then we have, we have Fox, we do have Foxtail down south of there, which is moving ahead. But then the other two I mentioned were, there were a couple of industrial developments further down that, like I said, we don't know if they're moving ahead or not. So those are the ones that we don't really know for sure. And then it gets a little convoluted as you go past intersections because.
Kenwood.
Exactly, yeah, so that's where I really just be kind of guessing to a certain extent on what the distribution would be through there, so that it gets a little, I mean, it's challenging to know, you know, to give an accurate estimate on that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything?
What is the distance between the southernmost entrance and the Kenwood intersection?
It, it's actually quite a distance because there's going to be an outlaw there that.
Oh, yeah, they're not developing all the way to Kenwood, are they?
Yeah, I want to say that's probably 300-foot of frontage, so maybe 400, 500 feet away, I would guess.
Action right there.
Anyone else? Hearing no more comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve, uh, preliminary plat development, uh, PP twenty-two oh one.
I have a motion to approve preliminary plat development PP twenty-two oh one. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Song.
Yes.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Motion is approved. This will go, uh, before the Board of Directors on March the first. Next, uh, item, Ben will present the next two items on our agenda together. Final plat development FP twenty-two oh three and rezoning development permit, RZ twenty-two oh one. Ben Rhodes.
Yes, sir. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commission. So, yes, the Chair was correct. Uh, I'll be presenting on the next two items together because they also are occurring on the same property. Uh, so this is a fa- final plat and rezoned development permit for the rezone is actually a very rare down zoning. So, it's going from R three to R two. And, um, as I say, that's happening on the same property as the, uh, uh, final plat. Uh, we are at the twenty-one to twenty-four hundred block of East Kenwood Street. So, uh, a stone's throw away, uh, from the last project, which is right in the neighborhood. Uh, and as you know, um, the Planning Commission doesn't typically look at final plats. In fact, there's, I believe there's some final plats on the board-approved items later on the agenda, but this one is before you for consideration. The reason for that is when there are any alterations in the plan, so you, you were presented with a preliminary plat for this development. And what's happened is when that, when they went through the construction process, they had to make alterations to the plan. So, it's not matching exactly to the approved preliminary plat. So, with that, there's an additional level review required. Make sure that the changes that were made are gonna be okay and, you know, uh, uh, everyone still agrees that that's, that's acceptable to make the, the proposed change. So, that's why you're looking at that. Um, so some statistics, this is creating seventy-two single-family lots, uh, average lot size of eight thousand and three square feet. And, um, here is just the, uh, site plan or the general area map for the rezoning. As you can see, it's the same area. And, uh, the area that you're considering for the final plat is not the entire subdivision, it's just for the first phase. So, it's the area that's shown, not in shaded, but the white-colored lots there on the map. And, um, just for a little further, um, detail for you, this is just giving you some blow up, uh, of the, of the different lots. This is, uh, Waukesha Road, uh, with the street coming in off of that. And then there's another connection coming up off of Kenwood with another street going, running down, uh, to the south. So, um, as far as the original plan to the new plan, uh, so on the left, we have what was presented in the original, and then on the right is the new. And if you can see here, what's circled in the red is what the, what's changed. So, um, what happened is they, uh, during the development process, came to realize they needed additional area in their drainage basin to be able to have that function properly. Um, that, that just kind of came out under the review of the conditions on the site. Sometimes things have to change, and that's one of the changes. So, you see lot thirty-four went away, um, and now that is the drainage basin, and the lots essentially shifted sort of to the south. And this lot thirty-seven got, I believe, a little bit bigger, but then split to create, to make up for the lost lot that's on the north. So, that's what the changes i- is. Uh, they all still meet the minimum, um, R two uh, zoning requirements for lot width and, and, um, lot area. So, there's no, uh, zoning violations or anything like that. It's just a slightly different configuration than what was presented in the preliminary plat. So, as we said, we, we have to present that to you for your consideration. Um, that's not the only change. They did slightly change the phasing plan. So, this was what was originally presented. The, uh, orange shading is the phase one and the purple shading is phase two. But what they're actually doing is that. Um, so if you go back, you'll notice these lots were all supposed to be part of phase one. They are not. And then this area also changed a little bit as well. As you can see, additional lots were included on phase one on the north street, but then we, we lost the lots along the south. Not a really significant deal in terms of planning, but it is a little bit of a change of what was presented with the original, um, preliminary plat. So, you are considering a zoning as well, and a little bit on the zoning, like as to why, um, that is happening. Uh, the, so the, the property is zoned R three now. That, that stands for, uh, two-family dwellings, so duplexes are allowed in R three. But this is entirely single-family development. So, it just makes more sense to have it as R two. And also, that will eliminate any confusion down the road if a homeowner wants to, like, subdivide their house or try to split it up in some way to create additional dwelling unit when they're really not set up at all to do it that way. And so, we want to basically have the zoning to, to match what the actual development plan is. So, um, what you're looking here is the future land use map. Uh, the purple is industrial and the high density is the, the area on the top. As you know, that's not what is being built, um, mainly because the zoning was already there. Zoning always takes precedence over the future land use map. Uh, and we believe in this case, it is still appropriate to, to zone it as residential because of the past zoning and the approval of the preliminary plat for single-family residential. I will note that the industrial is, uh, happening further south, which was on our map shown as residential. So, essentially, these uses are flip-flopping, industrial going to the south, residential going back to the north. Um, here is a fresh, uh, site view. Um, I was out, uh, taking drone pictures yesterday and uh, thought, you know, why don't I come by the subdivision just to get another peek of it. And so, here's, uh, literally as of yesterday, what the subdivision looks like. They are bonding, um, the, the addition, so anything that's not, uh, completed by the time it gets to the, um, Board of Directors will be as part of a performance bond, and that is the first condition, um, that we need to have that, and by February eighteenth. Um, second condition is standard, uh, for, uh, filing within forty-five days. Uh, third is the two-year maintenance bond, and then the fourth, uh, on the rezoning application, that that must be approved um, before the plat, um, document is filed for records, so that there's not a mismatch of, uh, approved zoning or, or a filed plat happening before the zoning is approved by the City Board. And, uh, with that, we're available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address either the final plat or the rezone? Thank you. Commissioners.
Ben, I'm just curious, why February eighteenth on the performance bond? That seems pretty quick for them. Is that driving, driven by time?
Yes, uh, because this is gonna go to the March first board. There's a certain, uh, lag time required to get items on the board. It's about a two-week period. Um, and so, we really need to know two weeks prior to the board meeting, um, when, you know, that everything is, is in order for the, for the subdivision.
Feel like that's an achievable timeline for them?
Um, I believe it would be, yeah. I'm getting the nod from Taylor, so.
There any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion, and as before, we will have to approve these separately. So, first off, I'll entertain a motion for final plat, uh, development PP twenty-two oh three.
I'll make a motion to approve FP twenty-two dash zero three with staff-approved conditions.
I have a motion to approve FP twenty-two oh three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Bernard.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Song.
Yes.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
Kenny.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes, motion is approved. This will go before the Board of Directors on March the first. Now, I'll entertain a motion for RZ twenty-two dash zero one.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve motion RZ twenty-two dash zero one.
I have a motion to approve rezoning development permit RZ twenty-two dash zero one. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Williams.
Yes.
Song.
Yes.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Motion is approved, and this also will go before the board on March the first, twenty-two. Next item on our agenda is significant development permit SD twenty-two oh two, and, uh, I'll entertain a motion to table SD, I'm sorry, SD twenty-one dash zero three, significant development permit. I get that right, Ben? I got two different things here. I've got an SD twenty-two oh one and I've got an SD twenty-one thirteen.
I believe it's, uh, what I have in my notes is tw- uh, twenty-two oh one.
Okay.
Dogwood Terrace.
All right.
That's what I have also.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to table SD twenty-two zero one, uh, significant development permit.
Motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Song.
Yes.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
Kenny.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
This motion is approved. This will come back to the Planning, uh, Planning Commission on a special meeting on February the twenty-second, twenty-two. Okay, next item on the agenda is a review of building, uh, building permit re- review, BPR twenty-two dash zero one. This is brought about by, uh,
It, I'm sorry, I didn't get to.
It was, it was brought about from, from a Board of Directors.
Uh, yes, there, there will be an ordinance. I'll cover all that in my presentation if I may start, so.
All right, go for it.
Yeah, yes, uh, thank you. Um, what we're looking at is a, um, a, uh, very unusual permit for the Planning Commission. Um, it's probably, I think, one of the only ones I've presented so far by tenure at City, but this is a building permit review. So, as you know, building permits are, are staff-level reviews. So, they're not something that we take to a board or a commission. Um, otherwise, you guys would have very, very long agendas as, as we get many building permits, um, you know, uh, on a daily basis. But, um, there was an ordinance, um, passed in twenty-twelve for a, uh, prohibited use permit. And, uh, prohibited use permits are, they're, they're, um, they're obsolete now. We don't offer them anymore, but back then we did. And essentially allows for a use that's not normally allowed in the zoning to happen in a particular zone. Um, like, for example, would be a commercial business in a, in a residential zone, that would be a prohibited use because commercial business would not be allowed in that area. So, what happened was, um, there was a old garage structure on this lot that had been split off previously, uh, a couple of years earlier. And, uh, there was a, a code change, um, that said that you can split a garage separate from the lot, provided that, you know, um, the lots were not sold separately. So, they, they, this is actually in our code, says that, you know, the, the owner has to own both Lot A and Lot B, and they can't sell off one lot from the other uh, and leave this garage on the other lot, or, or a structure that's not a residential use. And so, uh, what happened is in around twenty-ten, I believe in December of twenty-ten, the, uh, that did happen where the owner of the house to the south, um, of this property, it was, sold that, that property. And so, that triggered, uh, an issue where either this garage had to be torn down or had to be converted into a home. And so, uh, the owner at the time, um, I, I got a gentleman by the name of Mr. Radiskey, uh, converted or attempted to convert this structure into a dwelling. Uh, and there was some, uh, concerns raised with the neighborhood about that happening. Uh, and there was generally just sort of, um, a sense at the time that we just would prefer just to leave this as the garage, not have it be a house. Uh, and so, um, what the solution that came out at that time, we're, we're in around the year twenty-twelve, so it took a couple of years for this to come to full fruition, was a prohibited use permit to allow for this garage to stay on the property indefinitely. So, that was passed, but, um, and I believe I might, oh, I don't think I do have the, the ordinance in there, but it is in your packet. Um, that, uh, ordinance came with a condition, uh, that if there was any further development on this property, that that had to go before the Planning Commission for review. So, now we are fast-forwarding to the present day. This lot has sold and the people there want to build a home on it, um, but we have to abide by this ordinance from twenty-twelve that says that you guys need to review this, uh, with the staff to just basically confirm that, you know, we're, we're not missing anything, that this does meet the regulations for a building permit. And, and that's my understanding of, of being true to that, uh, condition in the original ordinance. So, um, here is the, uh, site plan. Um, uh, this is, uh, happening at two twenty-four South College. I believe some of the earlier documentations had it as two twenty-two South College. It's the same location. They're just slightly different address, but it's the same location. Um, so, the, uh, site plan here, um, you'll notice there is, uh, there are two access easements, one from two, two thousand two, and another one that was filed in twenty-ten. That allows for use of the property, uh, going out, um, for not only Track One B, but also for this, the, um, property to the north, as well as the property to the south. They, if you've been out to this property, they actually have one driveway that comes in. It's a gravel driveway that's been there for many years, um, to service basically these prop- properties. Um, the, uh, proposal, uh, involves a six hundred and forty square foot residence. Uh, there's a side porch and then a fifteen-by-twenty carport. Uh, that's slightly off-center to the driveway, a little bit further to the north. As you can see, the driveway would come in south, and there's a little bit of a, um, offset to that, um, to allow for space for the other vehicles to maneuver through there. This is the, uh, original, um, two thousand and nine lot split. Uh, just to show you what the land survey looks like, uh, the applicant was using this initially to work off of, to do a site plan. So, that's where you see the drawing on there of the residence. But it does show the, uh, gravel driveway, uh, and part of it was asphalt, it's back in two thousand and nine. And then the garage or the neighboring structure, I believe that is still there. And, uh, this is essentially kind of what they will look like. It's a basic, um, gabled roof, uh, structure. And, uh, floor plan. Uh, again, because this is a building permit review, we just want to give you all the information. Uh, has a ma- uh, single-bedroom, bath, kitchen, living room, uh, area and the porch. Uh, so, the relevant codes, uh, again, and, uh, this was all in the staff report, but just wanted to, uh, go through. What we look at when we review a building permit, we really go back to the zoning itself and, and look at it, make sure that there uh, that whatever the proposal is matches to the zoning. So, we have, uh, the first top here is there setbacks. Um, I will note that, um, for number A there, that says front setback must be within ten feet of the front setback of adjacent structures. That is not possible with the, with a flagpole lot. And the reason being is that the, a flagpole lot, and I'll go back here, i- i- it doesn't allow for that, because any construction here will not line up with the setback of the neighboring structures on either side. So, um, how we look at this is that, um, when this was split off, the intent was that this was to be built as an infill lot and as a construction lot. And there is a, uh, language within the code to And there is a, uh, language within the code to, to make that at the determination of the administrator. So there's not, um, you know, a cut and dry every time there is a, uh, determination. You have to look at it the case-by-case basis and say, okay, does this make sense in this situation or not? And, and we believe that this is, this is not appropriate in this location, because if you applied this, essentially the lot would be, not be buildable. You could not build on it. Uh, the other setbacks you have within the, uh, the standard setback, you have your front, uh, twenty-foot, your size eight, uh, with one that can go up down to five feet. Satin corners not applicable, because on a corner, and then you have the rear at fifteen feet. All of those set- setbacks are being met. You can look at that on the site plan. Um, and I would remiss to not mention, there is an additional site plan at your places, um, that shows a little bit more detail of the fence, um, so that will come into play, uh, a little bit later today when we talk about this. Um, height limit, obviously it's well under thirty-five feet. Floor-to-area ratio, um, we're well under that. That's the, the amount of square footage built on the lot of this size. We're nowhere even close to that. Um, the, you can always go up to point five. Uh, set, the residential driveways, really this is not applicable because this is not an, a proposed driveway. It's an existing driveway. So you're not really applying, uh, these rules to something that already exists. It's always towards something that's being built or proposed. Um, and then the residential bulk is, um, a rule, uh, put in place to make sure that the general size of these structures fits the sizes of the neighborhood. Um, one thing I will say is that it has to be viewable from a public thoroughfare. And the way that this is set up, I'll go back, and I know I'm going back and forth a lot between these lots, but just, or these slides just to show you, but there is a, there's a house right here. And so the, the view, the visibility of this, this structure is not going to be very clear from the street. Now, there might be some cross-visibility, but with a lot of vegetation, it's going to be really hard to see this house from College Street because of how it's positioned on the lot. Furthermore, um, you have to take into account, um, other, uh, structures in the neighborhood within a block radius, and there are quite a few str- single-storied, smaller bungalow-type structures right across the street that would have to be factored in as well, determining, uh, the bulk and area of this. Uh, and, and the other thing I would want to note about that rule is the spirit of that rule is to prevent very large homes from being built next to smaller or modest bungalows that would create kind of a mismatch feeling in the neighborhood. You really don't see that the other way around with a smaller house with biggers around there. It's not going to have that same impact as a larger home built right next to smaller houses. This is the, uh, the property. As it, as you can see here, here's the house that was, uh, that I was mentioning earlier, that the new property, uh, home would be basically built right back behind there, roughly in that area. That's not exact, but somewhere in that area. Um, and so, uh, with that, I think that kind of covers, um, everything I wanted to say at this. Um, obviously, there will be some questions from, uh, on it. Um, one thing that I'm asking for is, it's a motion to confirm that you've reviewed the, the permit. You're not, uh, making a motion to approve. That's still at a staff-level, um, determination. So with that, uh, we're available for any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Okay, first I would ask if there's anyone from the audience that would like to address this issue. Uh, if you do, please come forward, state your name and address, and, uh, speak into the mic for the record.
Hello, my name is Patrick Kelly. Live at three-oh-two South College Street, which is the home that this lot was, uh, split off from. Uh, thank you for being able to address you. I do want to point out that from the, in the minutes when that ordinance was made, that it was clarify what a review means, which also does include an approval from, from this, um, group. So, uh, I have several concerns about the, uh, building permit. The purpose of the historic district is established to enhance and protect the utility, beauty, and enjoyment and value of the historic residential area. And I'm concerned that this will affect the utility, enjoyment, and value of the homes that it's right around. I'm not concerned about the beauty, because I do believe that the Bex will build a very nice place. I also want to state, I'm not against building back there, or the Bex building back there. I'm just concerned about this specific plan, and my wife actually has some handouts, if she can give them to you. Um, they kind of show, uh, what, uh, some of it Ben already went through. But my, my major concern is the easement, and in order to accept the permit as it appears to be drawn, which the, what you were given, or what we've all been given as far as that permit, doesn't actually state where the carport is, which is what encroaches on the easement and how I get in and out of the areas that I do get in and out of. Uh, this can be, uh, seen, and when you look at your packet, there's the original plat, which you can see that the shop sits right on the north side of Vacated Beach Street. You can see the, the photo when the shop was still there, and how vehicles, it's actually a circle, they were circling around the drive at the end there. Um, and, and the next, um, I, I used the picture he had, of course, the line's a little slanted. I'm not sure where the carport was, but if you extend, uh, that orange line goes across where that garage was seated and where the driveway went to, that, uh, my easement says I have access to that whole, um, that whole area. And, uh, and the next one, it shows how I do, um, park in front of the garage and one, uh, vehicle just to the west side of the garage. I have done that for the time that I lived there, and actually, Mike Radisky still owned that property. Um, and he's the one who gave, um, the easement, which I think I, I gave to you as well. And Mike was very clear with all of the neighbors that used that on details of that easement. Uh, he met with us the days that we moved in, and the whole time, um, he allowed me to be able to get a camper back beside there and all kinds of things. But with the current plan, um, not sure where that carport is, it will make that difficult, because I'll be pulling straight out towards that carport. Um, also with some of the other plans with the fences and stuff, it'll actually limit me, so I can't actually have access to that portion of the easement that I have enjoyed and that has been enjoyed by that property for a very, uh, long period of time. So those are, those are some of the, the major, um, concerns that I have, because that does affect the utility and enjoyment of, of how this hundred-and-twenty-year-old house and, where I think the, the garage has been there for eighty years, and, um, how all of that is used. So yeah, um, Mike, Mike allowed me to, to back up my trailers in there and all kinds of stuff, and, um, and had clarifications with him. Um, as was stated in, I don't know, but am I out? I, I can't see my clock.
Yeah, you're out of time, but go ahead.
Okay. Um, I do have some other concerns dating back to two thousand and nine. I won't get into those in great detail, but the bulk and height was discussed with the lot split. And at that time, David Williams and, and also, uh, Mr. Rhodes, um, were saying different things that would not have actually allowed this permit that is proposed today to, to work. Uh, I do have notes on, or the, the minutes on that, but I, I don't have time to discuss all of that with you. Um, also concerns about the driveway, that was a part of the original split, how that would, the paving and all of that, uh, would be handled. Um, so there are things that are very much conflicting, and the whole point of this review is to protect these historic homes, which are some of the oldest homes on South College Street, because what happened in oh-nine was not beneficial to, to the H-one district and, and what was happening there. And, uh, other neighbors could talk about that more than I can, uh, they, um... But, um, I'll stop at this point, but really, I, uh, beyond saying, I think that the best-case scenario is that the neighbors sit down and we talk about this, rather than things being pushed through and it going to the courts and all kinds of issues happening. Um, and we've, we've reached out to, to the Bex, and we actually had a meeting set, and unfortunately, um, and for good reason, that meeting wasn't able to happen. They, they weren't able to come up.
Alright, let, let's give someone else a chance to...
Sure, sure.
To, to adj- uh, address the issue here and...
Sure. So yeah, I just would encourage maybe waiting.
Okay, is anyone else that would like to address? Please come forward, state your name and address. No, he, that's reporter. Come on up, sir. Please state your name and address for, for the record.
Brian Beck. I'm the owner at two-twenty-four South College.
Okay.
Um, what Mr. Kelly stated is it a little bit misrepreta- misrepresents, I think, the, the use of an easement to his property. This lot, we purchased this lot not knowing any of this prior to purchasing this lot, getting a permit, and going through the approval process. So we're having to work through this backwards, uh, and try to find a resolution to pre-existing conditions we were unaware of. Uh, that easement grants them access of the abandoned alleyway to their properties. And we've acknowledged that from the beginning, when it was brought to our attention that that easement existed. And we actually never intended on denying anyone access from the get-go of this, whether there was an easement or not. Um, but the way the lot lays, we have the, it is a small lot with limited usable space. And what Ms., the way Mr. Kelly described this, basically, he's saying he needs the use of the actual lot to pull into, turn around, and maneuver to use his garage. There's adequate room to use this alleyway and to access that garage without having to encroach onto the actual buildable lot. I mean, if you, if we all stood out there and looked, um, it's kind of like me saying, I need to pull across your front yard, because I decide I want to back my trailer in my front yard. I mean, it, there's adequate use here for them to access their property in a reasonable manner. But I don't think, there, the lot would be completely unbuildable if you maintain Mr. Kelly's description of use that he needs. Uh, I don't think in any subdivision, there's enough room to, in the middle of a street, turn a camper around and back it up, you know what I mean, to the, to the front of a house. Um, with that being said, we've tried to go through this process and make sure we meet everything and build something that fits in the neighborhood, build a style of house that, uh, matches the homes that are there, uh, still leaves good green space, uh, and those type of deals. But, um, we just want to, we just want to be able to build the house on our lot that we purchased, and, uh, we're willing to work with the neighbors on the access. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Beck.
Misty Stevens, seventeen-zero-one Villa View Drive. Um, I'm the, I was the real estate broker when the, the Bex purchased this off, um, this lot. And, um, Shannon Clayberg was my agent that had the listing. In her listing, um, both neighbors that had joined this, um, were excluded from the listing, so they could purchase directly from the owner and offered it that way. Um, so both, uh, the Davises and the Graves were offered an opportunity to purchase this lot. Um, and everything's been, you know, gone through, above-board. It is a buildable lot. It does have the easements, the driveway access, and everybody is doing what they're supposed to do for the use of this lot. And so I hope that there's not any, um, objection to this approval. Do you have any questions about anything I might have knowledge of?
Okay, thank you. Anyone else that would like to come up and address this issue? Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, I'm Tim McCord, two-twelve South College, and we're in the property that is just to the north of the... And so it's not the two that are sharing the driveway. The, uh, what I wanted to just clarify, I mean, I don't think anybody can understand what has happened in the history on this thing without reading through some of the notes that have been distributed. The, uh, the lot never should have been split, uh, but yet it was. It was approved by the commission with a condition that had to be met, that was not met, and the lot split was filed anyway. Then property sold, ownership changes, uh, the city, at one time, I was told that the lot was virtually unbuildable because, without being a very small house like, uh, what's being proposed here, and, um... But yet a building permit was issued, not this one, we're talking about previously, and it was through negotiation with the neighbors who did not trust the building permit process is the reason you guys are involved. Uh, they were given, the previous ones were given a permit to convert that old garage into living quarters without any consideration of height, bulk, does it fit? Not anything like the review that's gone through with this one. So frankly, we didn't trust the process. And we, and, uh, the other thing that happened was, when the lot split was approved, the neighbors, uh, didn't realize there was a tabled follow-up meeting, so we didn't come. The lot split was approved, and then, uh, the neighbors immediately contacted city staff and said, "How do we appeal this process?" And we were told we'd do it at the next meeting. Well, the, the end result of all that is we were told incorrectly how to appeal, and therefore, the timeframe expired, uh, in our ability to appeal, and we all of a sudden had a big problem, that the neighbors hadn't been treated fairly. Um, and it just turned into a really big mess. And so I, I would, you know, there's a lot of debate. Here we are today. I mean, what I have told some people is that ship has already sailed. Uh, and while we don't like the idea of a house back there, the lot split was approved. A very small house, it looks like to me, can be approved, but it has to be off of the neighbors' easements. And those are legal issues that, you know, we all can say, "I think it includes all of Beach Street and all of the alleyway," which is what it reads like to me. But that's something I'm afraid attorneys are going to have to get involved in determining a civil issue like that. Uh, I just wanted to point out that, that this has been a long, arduous journey, uh, for all of the neighbors. And, uh, I think going slow, uh, is probably a good idea. Everything I've seen from Mr. Beck and talking to him, it sounds like he'll build a nice-looking cottage back there that's one-bedroom, that would limit the number of people that ultimately could live there if it ever became a rental. Uh, you know, and while it's not what we would have preferred originally, uh, or would want, it looks to me like, I mean, he's got a lot that's buildable. So anyway, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCord. I've been all, I've been real generous with the time, and I'll continue to be real generous with the time. Uh, but I would ask, if you come up to speak, don't start beating that horse over and over and over. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak to this issue? Okay, commissioners, you got any questions of Ben? As is stated of our duties, I'll entertain a motion that we have confirmed the review, and once again, it is the staff's, city, planning staff to approve or disapprove building permits, not the commissions.
I, I guess I have a question about the easement, um, before we get into voting.
Ben, would you like to come up and address that, or do we need, yeah?
I'll do my best.
Ben, could you just talk a little bit about our ability to ensure we know where that line is? And, you know, Mr. Kelly provided this document that shows, uh, what appears to be some, some intrusion upon that by the carport, and can you just talk about that? I mean, some sort of comfort level there?
Well, uh, first of all, the city is not party to easements, just so you know. Um, my, this is a private matter between neighboring property owners. Now, we do require ease, access easements in situations where, uh, what we say in planning parlance, a lot becomes landlocked, which means it doesn't have any street access. Uh, you've done, we've done lot splits in the past and things that were, we've required an access easement to get to a, a rear lot. This is a little bit of a different situation, because technically, every lot along College Street has street access. Street has street access. The reason the access easement was granted was because of the historic use, from my understanding, of this gravel driveway. And it had been used primarily by the one lot of, when it was all one lot prior to 2009. And then the neighbors to the, to the north used that same driveway. And so when the split happened and then the subsequent land sale, I believe, into the Dixon's in 2010, Mr. Radzinski on his own applied for that access easement. I don't have any records that the city reviewed that or was involved in that. To my knowledge, we did find out about the land sale, which triggered the need for the prohibited use permit later on. But the, how I, how I, my approach to access easements is that it's just that, it's intended for access. So if there is an access easement and the, someone is building a structure or parking in a manner that prevents or hinders someone's access to their property because it's been blocked, that, that would be a violation of the access easement. But if there is adequate space and availability for someone to get from the street to their property by use of that access easement, in my opinion, that access easement is being met. I'm not an attorney, so there might be a disagreement on that from other legal minds, but that from a, from a practical standpoint, that's, that's how I look at it, so.
And that's a neighbor issue, not a city issue? I mean, depending.
That's my understanding, yeah.
And, and just to clarify, those easements are of record-deeded easements, correct?
Yes, yes. They both have been filed. There was one in 2002, and then a later one in 2010, I believe.
So that information is, I mean, it's out there in title on the policy. I mean, if you were to buy this property, it would be discovered.
It would be on record, yeah.
Any other questions from the staff? And I'll entertain a motion that... We had closed down the audience, if you'll recall, after the last, after Mr. McCord, I gave our
The easement didn't come up till after he spoke, that's what I'm saying.
The easement was, the first person up there that spoke talked on the easement. I need a motion to confirm that we did review the building permit, but there's no action we can take on that. But I do need a motion that
Chairman, I move to confirm the review of building permit 22-01.
I'm going to need a second.
Just so I know my options here. I mean, we're, we're not voting. We're just confirming review, what's already been done. Is that right, Jay? I mean, I mean, we're voting to say that we reviewed it, but we're not, we don't have the opportunity to do anything about it.
That's correct. I mean, the approval will still lie with, with staff. Yes, you're just acknowledging that it has been reviewed and there has been a public hearing and that that has occurred. I don't have it in front of me. But it, but it does apply, the ordinance says, just say review, it doesn't say anything about approval.
One of the commissioners have the ordinance up here that you'd
It was in our packet, I think.
Right. Ordinance 12-11, and this is filed September 2012. And I'll read it to you, which is a little out of the ordinary, but we'll do it anyway. Whereas a public hearing on prohibited use development permit was held on the 14th day of August 2012 before the City of Solon Springs Planning Commission after proper notice required and law. And whereas no opposition to the permit was received, and whereas the prohibited use development permit was recommended for approval by the Solon Springs Planning Commission, and whereas it appears that the permit for a permanent use of an existing freestanding accessory building in the R2 Zone District in the public interest now therefore being enacted by the Solon Board of Directors as follows. Prohibited use permit PU12-02 for property located at 222 South College is hereby granted subject to the following conditions. Further residential building permit issuance for the track shall be subject to Planning Commission review dated and resolved this 18th day of September 2012, signed, Mayor and City Clerk. With that ordinance, we have reviewed it, but there's still no action that the Planning Commission can take. That is a city planning function, city staff function. So I have a motion to acknowledge review of building permit. And I think, did I get a second on that? I need a second on that.
Second.
And I have a second. Roll call, please.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
Kenny.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Song.
Yes.
Okay. The motion is approved. All right, the next item on our agenda is city comprehensive monthly update, which you received, and board-approved permits, which you have listed, along with staff-approved permits. Ben, do you want to address any of those?
I'm available for any questions on any of those. You have the information on the agenda there, so.
Does anyone have any questions on the board-approved We have no questions on those items. Therefore, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor, so signify by saying yea.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.